Good evening, everyone. The City Council has returned from their closed session and we will continue with our public meeting now. Looking at agenda items moving forward, next week, July 13th, our meeting will begin at 7:30. We'll have a proclamation recognizing BB Moore Campbell Minority Mental Health Awareness Month. Our voting session next week will be the first reading ordinance amending the Tacoma Park election ordinance. Our work sessions next week are presentations of library bids, procurement on storm water resilience study, FY23 budget amendment number one, and appointments to boards and committees. Then on July 20th, just note, council members, we're meeting at 6:30, starting at 6:30, because we're going to start with a presentation of the minor master plan update. So on July 20th, our meeting will start at 6:30 with a presentation. Then we'll go into our voting session, which will be a second reading ordinance amending the Tacoma Park election ordinance, single reading ordinance awarding a contract for library construction, single reading ordinance awarding a contract for a storm water resiliency study, first reading ordinance approving FY23 budget amendment number one, and resolutions providing for appointments and reappointments to boards and committees. Our work sessions that evening will be a procurement for a tree canopy pilot contract, rental inspection contract with Montgomery County, and ARPA procurement, a contract for a direct cash assistance program. Then on Wednesday, July 27th, our meeting will begin its regular time at 7:30. Our voting session will be the second reading ordinance approving FY23 budget amendment number one, second reading ordinance approving a contract for the ARPA direct cash assistance program, second reading ordinance approving a contract for a tree canopy pilot program, and a single reading ordinance authorizing execution of a contract with Montgomery County for rental inspections. Tentatively, the council does have a possible meeting on August 3rd if some of the work that we have scheduled cannot be completed by the 27th. But then, after that, council will be on its August recess and will return to regular meetings on September 14th. Note that the nominating caucus for the upcoming city elections in the fall will be held on September 13th. Next, I will now read a proclamation for an event that actually took place last week while we were not together. It is the 25th anniversary of Tacoma Park unification. Whereas until 1997, the city of Tacoma Park was incorporated within both Prince George's County and Montgomery County, whereas residents and city officials were challenged by transacting business with two county governments, two different county court systems navigating different zoning licensing and permitting requirements depending on which county a property was located within, two county school systems, and numerous other by-county differences. And whereas after more than 15 years of lobbying and organizing by residents and city officials, Maryland House Bill 1090 passed in 1994, authorized a referendum to take place on November 7th, 1995, to allow Tacoma Park voters in each county to determine whether they wish to alter the boundaries of the two counties to place all of Tacoma Park within one county. And whereas in November 1995, the residents of Tacoma Park voted 2,382 to 272 to unify into Montgomery County. And whereas 25 years ago, on July 1st, 1997, the county boundaries are amended so that all of Tacoma Park would be within Montgomery County. Now therefore, I Kate Stewart, Mayor of the City of Tacoma Park, Maryland hereby recognize and proclaim the 25th anniversary of Tacoma Park unification, and I further proclaim our gratitude for the many residents, elected officials, and staff who have worked tirelessly towards the goal of one city, one county. Thank you very much for that, and please stay tuned that on September 18th from 2 to 4 p.m., there will be an event with a lot more fanfare than we had time to do. We also thought, given 4th of July and other things, that we would take the time in the fall to actually properly commemorate the unification. All right, now with that, I will turn to public comments. First, we'll take public comments in the auditorium on voting items. We have a consent agenda tonight regarding our National Capital Strategic Economic Development Fund grant applications. There are three of them. Does anyone have any public comments on that in the auditorium? Seeing none, I will move then to general public comments. Anyone with general public comments in the auditorium?
Good evening. I'm Jim Douglas. I live at 7112 Maple Avenue and serve on the Board of Historic Tacoma and also as the archivist for Historic Tacoma. Thank you, Mayor, for your recognition of the 25th anniversary of unification. It's indeed a remarkable historical event, one that we have been chronicling over the last several months by interviewing many of the participants, who, citizens, elected officials, staff from the city that were involved in the process, documenting the process of moving from a wild idea in the late 1970s to something that actually came to fruition in the mid 1990s. I won't go through the whole story tonight. I will say, if you have not had the chance, stop by our storefront window on Carroll Avenue. There's a very visual presentation there of all of the sort of chronicling, the headlines. Back then, we had a great local newspaper, the Tacoma Voice, so there was really a nice coverage. The city newsletter also for many years covered the events. So there's a very summary visual event presentation there. Our website, historicotacoma.org, has a more detailed presentation. And as the mayor said, we will get together on September 18th where we hope to have two or three panels of people from the city, the staff, elected officials, and very much the citizen activists to reflect and remember and to discuss the process of going through and what was ultimately successful. So thank you for your recognition, and we'll see you on September 18th.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Douglas, for all your work on this. And I will say that I will always know how long I've owned my house because when I purchased it, we were in Prince George's, and then a few months later, we were in Montgomery County. So thank you so much for that, and I look forward to continuing honoring and the unification. All right, any other general public comments in the auditorium? Seeing none, I believe we have one public comment online. Ms. Cordis?
Thank you. Colleen Cordis with Ward 1. I just wanted to share a little information about a very irregular proposal for a small cell tower that is in the corner of the Centennial Garden, the city park at the intersection of Boston Avenue, Philadelphia Avenue, and Piney Branch. Residents discovered that there was a new taller pole that had three 5G antennas on it that was not, that had never been, had never applied for a county permit or been reviewed by the county. So both the county and the city immediately worked with the applicant to help the applicant realize it's going to be Verizon wireless antennas there, that they should not have put those antennas up without applying for a county permit. So today, the tower committee, the county tower committee heard their application. And really, just in the last few days, it's become evident, there's been like fresh evidence that it's not actually state right-of-way. They got a state permit originally because they assumed and believed it was state right-of-way. And under state highway maps, it looks like state right-of-way. But it turns out that those state maps are, at that area, are, the state itself considers them at the level of lowest accuracy, and it indicates only what might be the boundaries of the state right-of-way. And that means it could be city right-of-way, or the pole, which is actually in the corner of the garden, could actually be. My understanding from conversations with Daryl, who over the phone has told me that there really would need to be a survey and possibly historical research to really sort out who owns the land around there, the garden area, as well as the right-of-way, where's the Boston Avenue right-of-way, the city versus the state right-of-way? So it's very complicated. Thank you so much to Councilmember Kovar, who requested a permit of a tower committee vote today so that could be sorted out. Unfortunately, the tower committee did not do that and went ahead and approved it, well, sent it on to the Department of Permitting Services with the condition that if it turns out it actually doesn't belong to the state, then it would need to come back to the tower committee for another review. So basically, I'm asking the council to support helping us sort this out. As Daryl told me, a boundary survey and possibly some additional historical research would be necessary to shed light on which jurisdiction owns what land at this intersection. And of course, that makes a difference because our city ordinance requires a public hearing and has other requirements like annual measurement. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Cordis. I believe those are all the public comments we have this evening. Again, thank you, Ms. Cordis, for staying on top of this and raising these issues. I will now turn to council comments. Councilmember Smith?
I just want to say thank you to all the comments this evening. Really appreciate hearing from residents. Want to give a special thank you to the Tacoma Park Independence Day Committee. Had an opportunity to participate in the parade. Excellent job. It's been two years since we had a parade, and it was good to see all the residents have a good time. So I want to thank everyone that helped, all the volunteers, all the people that participated, came out in their floats and walked the parade route. But it was really good and special thank you to city staff for making the day special. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith. Councilwoman Kostic?
Thank you. First of all, thank you to the public commenters, and thank you, Mr. Douglas, for your work in historic Tacoma's work on the unification history. Really looking forward to hearing some more in September on that. And I want to echo Councilmember Smith's thanks to the Independence Day Committee and the staff for all of the great work on the 4th of July. Really wonderful to have a parade again, to see everyone out celebrating, and really appreciate all the work that went into making that possible. And then just finally, it was since we're looking ahead at calendars, I want to flag that the National League of Cities Conference for their committees and board is at the end of July. So I will be attending our meeting at the end of July virtually at that time. And that's all for me tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman DeBala.
Yes, thanks. Yes, it was an amazing day. And thank you to the Independence Day Committee and to the city staff who made both the parade and the evening event possible. And thanks to everybody who showed up because it was great. Two, two things. Next Tuesday, Tuesday the 12th at 7 o'clock, the Long Branch Lego Neighborhood will be meeting with the police chief and myself to talk about some of the incidents that have been going on in that neighborhood. We're still working on details about exactly where and zoom location. So stay tuned, but it will be this next Tuesday, the 12th. I wanted to let folks know that county property tax credits for long-term senior and veteran residents that were due to expire this year have been extended two years by the county. And that's about 5,000 people, households countywide and over 100, I believe, here in Tacoma Park. So if you're one of those 100 and something and you raised this issue, they have extended it. And last but not least, tomorrow, early voting starts in the gubernatorial primary for state and county candidates for various offices. You know, I'm big on getting out and voting, so this is your chance. You've got the 7th to the 14th, and then again on the 19th, plus it's not too late to get a mail-in slash drop-in ballot online from the state. That's it for me. Thank you.
Councilwoman Circe?
Good evening, everyone, and thank you to those that provided comments tonight. We really appreciate not only your advocacy, but the fact that you all came out today to share with us. Couple of quick announcements. In terms of the sidewalk project at Larch, Kintland, and Hopewell, just want to remind the residents in that neighborhood that comments on the sidewalk design, the initial design, are due on Monday, July the 18th. And then, once we receive your comments, city staff will take a look, work with engineers, and then our hope is to have a revised design for everyone's review and vote at the end of July. So just want to encourage folks that if you have any requests as it relates to that sidewalk project and that traffic calming project, to please email them to Ian Chamberlain. He's keeping track and he's following up with folks who have specific questions around their property. The Hillwood Manor Playground, the storm water work is complete, and it held up very well during the recent rains. So I'm excited about that. And so in terms of next steps, we're just waiting on the playground equipment to be installed, and we're anticipating that that will happen in the middle of the month. So again, we're still have some plantings to do in addition to the playground install, but we're making progress. So we may actually have a playground before the end of the summer, so I'm excited about that. Want to echo my colleagues' appreciation for the 4th of July committee. It was such a wonderful event. It was so great to see people I hadn't seen in person in a while. So thank you all so much for all of your hard work. It was an excellent event. Also, because we did not meet last week, I want to thank the Crossroads Development Authority for the Summer Mercado that happened a couple of weeks ago, and it was also a wonderful event with lots of great food and wonderful bands. I mean, the music was awesome. And lastly, you've got 43 seconds. All right. I do just want to, and I know the mayor will be providing more words, but just want to acknowledge the passing of the prior Ward 6 Councilmember Reggie Chavez. And so I will be attending his homegoing on Friday, but wanted to just acknowledge our appreciation for his service and thoughts and blessings are with his family during this time. That's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Circe. Councilmember Sina?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a cute little story from about the 4th of July this year. Been working recently with a new resident to the United States from El Salvador, an older gentleman. And yesterday, July 5th, went to work, and this man came rushing over towards me with a big smile on his face and his hands in the air, and he says, "I learned," he says, "I learned something new." He said, "Freedom." He said, "Someone had talked to him at the 4th of July celebration and taught him what the word freedom and told him what it meant, and he was so happy that he had learned something new." I just thought it was cute. That's all.
You, Councilmember Kovar? Councilmember Kovar, can you hear us? Yeah, you're on.
Yes, I apologize. My sound is coming in and out. I wanted to thank, first of all, the Police Department and specifically the Chief, plus Captain Cipperly and Lieutenant Williams, and also City TV, all of whom were involved in the meeting we had this past week on recent criminal activity in Ward 1 and what the trends and statistics show and actions that people can take to help address that and prevent it in the steps that the police are taking. And I want folks to know who weren't able to be there, there were about 15 to 20 here in the auditorium and 15 to 20 online who participated. But the event was recorded, and if people are interested in seeing that recording, contact me and I'll forward you the link. Secondly, I want to express my appreciation to several people from the county parks staff who came out to look at the trees on the slope above Ed Wilhelm Field. And if you looked at that area, all the roots are very exposed, and there's the potential that the trees, though healthy now, will be harmed going forward and maybe a risk of falling, and they're near where kids and adults play. And so the county staff have come up with a plan to address that and will be doing that in the fall and shoring up the root area. I also wanted to mention for our staff, at the request of one resident, I took a brief walk through Armstrong Park the other day. That's the small park at the intersection of Holly and Philadelphia that it seems more or less like is part of the Tacoma Park Elementary School property. And it's somewhat overgrown, and my hope is that, number one, is part of the open space, public space management plan that we can make sure that smaller areas like that are covered. But number two, if the pathway could be cleared and some of the overgrowth there addressed, I think that would be helpful. I do want to say thank you to Colleen Cordis for the work that she did with regard to the cell tower at the intersection of Boston and Philadelphia avenues. And while the proposed installation was approved by the tower committee, there is this condition that if it turns out the ownership or the, who controls the site were to change, that that could potentially mean a different result. And so I'd like to suggest that the city maybe work with the county to see if we can get a survey conducted of the site so we could be sure of that before we go forward with the next step with the Department of Permitting Services. And then lastly, and I know a number of my colleagues mentioned it already, but I do want to thank the Independence Day Committee and the organizers of the parade. It was, as my colleagues have noted, really great to return with that and see everybody there. And I have just frozen. I have just frozen there, but I do want to thank everybody, and it was my last time to participate as a council member, so appreciate it. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Kovar. I just have a couple of events, just a couple of announcements. Just add my thanks to everyone for the 4th of July parade and the block party in the evening. It was a great turnout, as everyone said, and I do want to extend my thanks to the city staff, particularly Public Works and to the Police Department, because after the party, they have to go to work, we know. And so I asked the city manager to please extend the council's thanks to the hard-working staff in our Public Works Department and our Police Department for making sure we had a safe and then cleaned-up parade and celebration. Tonight, we are voting on a grant application, and one of the applications is for 112 Lee Avenue. And representatives of the tenant association could not be here this evening, but they asked me to read a letter on their behalf. So I'll do so. On behalf of the Leland Tenant Association, we thank you for your time, thought, and energy you have given to 112 Lee Avenue. The support we have been shown by the city of Tacoma Park reminds us why this diverse group of residents banded together a year ago to do everything in our power to remain a part of this remarkable community. The journey toward collective homeownership has been challenging work, and we officers joke that we at least tend to take turns being overwhelmed by it. So we thank you even for this reminder that we are not alone in our endeavor to maintain and revitalize our home, and that future tenant associations in Tacoma Park will not be alone either. And that's from the Leland Tenant Association. I just want to thank the city manager and particularly our interim Director of Housing and Community Development, David Eubanks, for all his works. Oh, he's permanent. I missed that. Permanent director now. Sorry, I missed an email. Congratulations, Mr. Eubanks, on being named permanent director. And this is even sweeter than I thought. Turning to some sad news, as Councilwoman Circe mentioned, I just want to end this evening by extending our sympathies and thoughts to the family of Reggie Chavez, who passed away recently. And I've been speaking with his nephew, who reached out to me after Mr. Chavez passed away and said, "One of the things that was so important to his uncle throughout his long life was his service to our community and when he served on the city council here in Tacoma Park, and it was very important to him." And so I'm going to take privilege as the mayor and actually extend my own time, and would like to read his obituary. "On Monday, June 27th, 2022, Reggie Chavez, loving husband and father of five children, passed away at the age of 84. Reggie was born on May 13th, 1938, in the Philippines to Marcelo and Juana Chavez. He received his Bachelor's of Science in Education from Far Eastern University and continued his professional career serving as district leader for the Seventh-day Adventist Church in Tacoma Park, Maryland, and also served as city council member for Tacoma Park, Maryland, and finally retiring as the fire inspector for the Prince George's County. On May 28th, 1961, he married Lydia E. Chavez. They raised four sons and one daughter. Reggie had several passions, including tennis, golf, gardening, serving the church in his local community, and most importantly, providing for his family. He also loved to travel back and forth from the U.S. to the Philippines, where he and his wife built a home they called the Avalon. He also enjoyed singing karaoke to his favorite songs, which included Delilah, Release Me, and Moon River. His love for tennis encouraged all of his kids to enjoy the game. Also, his love of politics and serving the community was evident as a four-term city council member, serving Ward 6 of Tacoma Park. His love for the church was evident in co-founding a church in his hometown in the Philippines and also the Fiamm Capital Seventh-day Adventist in Beltsville. He was known for his quick wit, cooking, and his infectious smile, and his kind and open arms inviting others to his..." He was known for his quick wit, cooking, and his infectious smile, and his kind and open arms inviting others to his home. He is survived by his wife and his five children and his grandchildren. And again, I just want to extend our thoughts and prayers to his family. I will be attending the viewing tomorrow, and Councilwoman Circe will be representing the city at the services on Friday morning. And I think with that, I will turn it over to the city manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. I just want to, number one, just give appreciation to the the staff for a job well done during the Independence Day celebration, the hard work before, after, and during the event for us to put on a great celebration that we haven't had in two years. So thank you to staff for that. And then the second item that I have tonight is is July is a fun month. July is Parks and Recreation Month, and we've been celebrating Parks and Recreation Month in July for about twenty-some, twenty-some years. Twenty, thirty years now. And I'll just read one of the quotes that I love by the late Charles Jordan, who was a Parks Professional as well as a City Commissioner. He he used to state that Parks and Recreation is more than fun and games. And when we celebrate Parks and Recreation Month, we're looking at celebrating health and wellness, conservation, the economic development, social equity, equity in general. And so this month, we rise for, rise up for Parks and Recreation, who help our community promote healthy lives each and every day, and just want to just send out appreciation to our parkies, our recreation team for all the hard work they do for our community each and every day.
Thank you. Thank you, the city manager. With that, we will turn to our voting session tonight. We have one item, a consent agenda that has three pieces to it on on the fund applications, and I would ask if someone would like to move our consent agenda.
So.
Councilmember Smith moved. Do I have a second? Councilmember Seaman's second. Given that Councilmember Kovar is online, I'll ask the city clerk to call the vote.
Councilmember Kovar? Councilmember Dibala?
Yes.
Councilmember Kostic?
Yes.
Councilmember Seaman's?
Hi.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Circe?
Hi, Mayor Stewart.
Yes.
All right, that takes care of our voting session. The only other item we have tonight is a work session on the discussion of the proposed election code amendments, and I'll turn it back over to the city manager.
And we'll turn it over to Madam Clerk.
All right, so what you have before you are draft revisions to the election code. The the Board of Elections wanted to recommend a few changes, recognizing it's very close to the election and there wasn't the opportunity to do this beforehand. There, after the election, they may want to recommend other changes, but just wanted to keep it short at this point, since we're so close, since we're in the election season essentially. So generally, there there's language in the draft to clarify who needs to register with, for campaign finance, and there's the addition of a political committee registration. Let's see, the authority line language has been the authority line section has been revised to exclude small items from the requirement to add an authority line on the item. Small things like buttons or pins. The the board was recommending reducing the number of campaign finance reports by one, so that there would only be three due during the election season. I understand there's various suggestions about when those reports should be due, so that's something you can talk about this evening. One of the things that has been added was a clarification, just to state it clearly in the code, that no person may use an absentee or mail-in ballot that was issued by the city for someone else. And there was a little confusion about that in the last election, and we just wanted to be able to point to clear language that address that. Matt Ling, from the Board of Elections, is on Zoom this evening, and he can answer questions. Also, the city attorney will be listening to your questions and well, hopefully not listening right now, but but reviewing your questions, and he will come back with any changes you want to see or any responses to questions you might have for next week at first reading. And I'd be happy to answer any questions as Matt Ling, but also is also here. And his cat.
And his cat, right. Great. Matt, thanks to you for joining. Did you have anything else you wanted to add before I opened it up to council questions?
Matt, you're muted.
Hi, sorry, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you now.
The only thing that I would add is, I think this was missed in the most recent draft, but I think the board wanted to include it, which was an exemption for the authority line for apparel. I'm not sure that was included, but Jesse and I were talking about that earlier tonight, and I think it's supposed to be, so.
Okay.
That's it.
Great, thank you. All right, I know Councilmember Kovar, if you've moved locations. If you can hear us, I know you and Councilwoman Kostic had some questions. I don't know if you want to kick it off, because it's off.
Yeah, I'm in the, I'm in the same location, just a different angle, because the sun was coming in, and it seems like my connection is a little bit unstable. I apologize. So I'm going to just quickly mention the the couple of concerns I had, and then send additional comments in writing. So one is on the seeking to influence language, and it does seem maybe no matter how we do it, it's hard to really capture what we're after. I think one of the things that we saw in the last election, though, was that other than the council members ourselves registering, nobody else did, and yet there were some efforts underway to, by organized groups, to try to influence the election, whi- which they had every right to do. And so I'm trying to, I'm really grappling with how to do it. Some of the things that are described seem pretty minimal to me and seem to be cases where there's, it would really be pretty unlikely that somebody would know that the activity in which they're engaging would constitute organizing or forming a committee, because I think it says something where if just two people get together and do something that might cost as little as a hundred dollars, that would constitute forming a political committee. I just don't think anyone will ever know that that's what they've done, and they will never put the information that they're required to put on the material that they do. And so either we have to really educate people more and find a way to enforce it more, or maybe raise a bar a little bit, or the threshold above which activity would be considered something that seeks to influence, right? But I don't want it to happen as really minor types of actions end up being running afoul of law. And then the second thing I would say is in the, on the question of how frequently the campaign finance reports have to be submitted, I do have a concern with cutting it from three to two, in particular because the way it's proposed is the first one would be about a week after the non-adjunct caucus, so for newer candidates, there wouldn't really be much to report at that time. And then the second one would be just about a week before the election. And so to the extent that we're trying to say we want there to be information on these contributions, so that people in the community understand, you know, the sources of funding that people are getting it from, mostly probably just their neighbors, but wanting to know that by leaving that big six-week gap in the middle, to me, it just doesn't quite do it. And so if there's something burdensome that the candidates or council members found about filing three times or the way it was filed or something, maybe we can try to address that, but I'm just personally uncomfortable with the idea that we have that one week, and then six weeks later, the other one, and really no opportunity for anyone who has a concern to maybe even be aware of it in time to then do something to point it out before the election. So I'd argue let's put back the other one, but maybe there's a another approach we could take.
Thank you, Councilmember Kovar. And just to piggyback on Councilmember Kovar's last point, I I I would like to see us reduce the number from three to two filings, but I agree with Councilmember Kovar that the timing of the the two don't work. The first one is too soon to really pick up much activity likely, and then I am very concerned about having only the, a second one so close to the election, because if somebody was to file an ethics complaint or concern, there's very little time in which to rectify the situ- situation or address it. So I would just ask that maybe the clerk and the Board of Elections look at that. I would be okay with reducing the time, but if we and I sent to the city clerk some suggestions. But I don't know if on those two points, the, I know Councilwoman Kostic also had questions about the seeking to influence the election and the financial reports, if the city clerk or Matt, if you all had any responses or comments you wanted to make.
Mayor, if I could just say one other thing, just what you just said about the the frequency or the or the timing for the filing, I mean, toward the election and move the last one a week back from the election, then maybe that would start to get to the point where the concern would be addressed. So some version of that, if if we're going to just stick with two. And I'll stop there, because I know my or at least my connection's unstable.
One suggestion I had on the schedule, and again, this is something that everyone could consider for next week, but a post-nomination report filed no later than four PM the second Monday after the nominating caucus. And then a pre-election report filed no later than four PM on the fourth Monday preceding Election Day. So that would be the second report, and the third report would be after the election, but still the third Monday after the election to give candidates more time to get that final report filed, so it's not a rush at the end. So that that's already included in the proposal. So that that's one suggestion for a three report scenario.
Right, any comments on the financial reporting? Just trying to group our, great. Matt, did you have anything you wanted to speak to on that?
No, just that I hear Councilmember Kovar's concerns. I think the board received a lot of feedback, just that the financial reports were burdensome to complete. And I think we're working on trying to streamline that process going forward, so it one would hope that the new processes that we develop would mean that it's less burdensome, so that might mean that the third report might not be as difficult as it was in the last election, but we we understand the concerns and we're sort of sorting through them and
Thanks, Matt. All right, anyone else regarding the seeking to influence election language and the Councilwoman Kostic?
To my, my comment is more on political, what are they called, political committees in general? Is that appropriate? Okay. So I agree with Councilmember Kovar's concerns about that. I think it's a little vague, and and maybe it just has to be, but I I think we should look a little more at that. I was just looking at the definition of political committee and the two or more persons formed to expend or or collect the mon- money. I I mean, it almost seems like, like if my spouse and I, you know, donate to to a candidate, would we be a political committee? I I don't know if that's precluded or not.
So I think it's not the donating to a candidate. It would be if, I guess if you and your spouse, and again, we'll get the city attorney's feedback on this, but if you and your spouse were expending money for or against a candidate on your own, not donating it to a candidate, but you're expending money buying signs against candidate X or for candidate Y, then you
Okay.
are a political committee. But again, with city attorney, we'll need to
Yeah.
weigh in.
Okay, I think it'd be good to look at that, yeah. My other questions on political committees were do the requirements, because I I'm not sure if they do based on the restructuring here, do the the requirements for listing an authority line on materials apply to political committees as well as candidates, because I do think they should.
They they do, I believe, and I'll try to find the section that addresses that.
And then also, it seems like the structure that, how things have changed with regard to maybe it wasn't written in before, but I think maybe it should be with regard to the the contributions that candidates receive. There are the restrictions on not receiving anonymous donations, not receiving corporate donations. I wonder if we should include something like that for political committees as well, because if we don't, I'm worried that that's just a way that someone might get around that, essentially.
That, that makes sense. We'll have the city attorney look at that.
Okay.
Yes. And the anonymous donations, I think one of your questions was what happens if you get an anonymous donation, and I think I think that's addressed in here. It it basically, you you can't use it. One cannot use it. I I think it says in here, what, it either goes to the city general fund or I'll I'll find the exact language for that.
Okay, great. Yeah, I wasn't sure if that was part of what was being removed with the edits or not. I have a few other questions, but I'll let others ask about this topic.
Right, any, thank you. Anyone else on the political committees seeking to influence language, specifically Councilwoman Dibala?
Yes, I have very similar questions to Councilmember Kostic's about. I agree that the same kinds of limits on candidates should also apply to a quote political committee. So for example, is the hundred bucks just cash, or is it in kind? If I have a home printer and a stack of paper, instead of buying it, you know, how does that play out? So that 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 was one kind. In practice, how does this work? So political committee is any combination of people formed in any manner for any purpose. So if you have an existing group, let's pick on friends in the library, because they're not here. They're already, they already exist. If they decided they wanted to quote influence the campaign and push one candidate or or another, so would they be a political committee as soon as they start to spend money? Is that the trigger is actually spending the money? So an existing group formed for some other purpose, this is my question, would that apply to them as soon as they start to do this? Do this work related to a specific candidate, but not through the candidate's campaign, because that's the, that's the line, the other line there, right? If if somebody just wants to give money to the campaign, then that's what, then the campaign is in charge of what happens, what the message is, et cetera. Okay. Yeah, I think there needs to be a little more clarity there in in all of, in in how this works in practice. And I think it was five point one, two point oh, one, oh, E, that answers the question that Councilwoman Kostic, because I wrote the question down, too. Does this, does some of this apply to political committees and not just to candidates? And I don't know if that goes far enough, but that's the start of the answer. Yeah, okay, that that's it for me on that topic. Thank you.
Anyone else on the political committees?
Can I ask you a quick question? Political committees, what are we trying to resolve with political committees? Giving, I mean, we could set a limit, but it's two hundred dollars, five hundred dollars, whatever. But what are we trying to resolve, saying that they can't give any money to a registered candidate?
No, it's, it's not saying they can't, well, let's ask the city attorney, because I I didn't understand it, that if people can raise money for candidates, but but that's different than raising money and spending it on your behalf, on a candidate's behalf, without donating it through the campaign itself. Did you see the difference?
Yes. So I guess I'm asking, what part of this does this code address?
Yeah. So we'll ask the city attorney to clarify. Yeah.
Because, I mean, you know, PACs give, can give money to candidates, and they can also have independent expenditures. have independent expenditures on behalf of candidates. So are we saying they can't do both or just one?
Yeah, we'll see. Because it needs to be clear. If it's not clear to me, if it's not clear to the board, got a problem. So, yeah.
And and is the idea we're not trying to say you can't do it. We're trying to say if you do it, you have to do it publicly. Essentially, because you have to register and be identified. Is that that's the gist of it? Matt, did you just start to say something?
Yeah, I was just gonna say that from my understanding that the code, the there's not, there's nothing stopping a political committee from donating to a candidate. And there's nothing in the political committee section that would prohibit that. I think the prohibitions are addressed separately. And I don't believe I'm looking at them now and I don't believe. Well, no, I'm I'm wrong. No candidate. So the new language does actually.
Yes. Corporate prohibit. Labor unions and political committees can't donate.
Yeah, that that might want to be. This language was was pulled from, I think, Hyattsville. And so that's something we'll definitely need to speak with the city attorney. The political committees, that language might have been intended to refer to political committees, not within the meaning of political committee in the Tacoma Park Code, but political committee and the you know, understood more broadly, like a like a state party or something or a state or but that's something we'll have to look into. I I think the board, the the idea behind the political committee really was to just to provide more transparency for spending that is not authorized by candidates. So there might be a group that might have be spending money for on a specific issue. I I would say that the response to Councilmember DiBala, when they're formed, I I I'm not sure that's the relevant point. I I think it's just that they're prohibited from spending money until they register and they're prohibited from raising money until they register. So that's really the they form once they start doing those things, if if that follows.
And and one other question, if a political action committee, a political committee, whatever we want to call it, is found doing things that are not in our code or if you want to call it illegal, what's the recourse?
My understanding that it would be a there, I can pull it up. It's a misdemeanor, I think. It says within the code, any violation is a class, something 300 or $500 fine. I can specifically.
Thank you.
And remember, we we got here because the the what what the board definitely wanted to do was get rid of that language seeking to influence an election because it was so confusing.
Right.
So then we ended up with separating the candidate and political committee and it took us down this other hole. So.
So really quick response to Councilmember Smith. And any violations of the of the Tacoma Park Elections Code are either Class A or Class B offenses, which are municipal infractions. I think a Class B is a $400 fine for the initial and then 800 for repeat offense. And so it's Class B and a Class A is a $500 fine and a $1,000 fine.
All right, so it looks like we had those two buckets of issues, the financial reporting and what we're discussing on political committees. Councilman Kostic, did you have additional things on those or new questions?
No, new.
New. All right, off to you then.
I have a couple of other miscellaneous ones, but as sort of a another bucket, I had a couple of questions related to registration. I wondered if it would be useful to add like an expiration timeline and say that the registration expires at the end of the election. So people have to re-register if they're going to run again. And then related to that, I think it also would be useful to look at the registration of political committees because those are entities that might theoretically be established over a longer period of time, particularly if they're working on an issue versus a candidate. That could exist across a couple of elections. So just looking at at that. And then I have a couple of other items. One was kind of going back to the the initial sentence, I think, in the code here that that talks about a person. No person may seek elected office in the city of Tacoma Park unless registered. And I wondered what seek office sort of qualifies as there because I I've heard questions from people before that timeline comes about or before they have registered, you know, maybe they're thinking about running. Can they talk with people? Can they have a party and invite people and tell people they're running? Is it more about just raising funds or what? At what point do they become seeking the office?
Right, so I my understanding is it was meant to address the raising of funds so that if you're starting to raise to obtain camp, seek campaign contributions, at that point, you you need to be registered. One needs to be registered so that you so that the candidate understands what the requirements are and what the file, the what the requirements are for documenting that information and and submitting forms.
Yeah.
Finance forms.
Yeah, so the finance component as well as the like literature distribution, I would think as well.
Yeah, and I I don't think there's any intention to like you're talking with your neighbors about maybe running for office is not doesn't reach to that.
I was gonna say, it may also help looking at the state, like because there there is explore, there is definition of exploring a run versus like registering and then doing running. And there are actually some allowable expenses that you can make when you're exploring a run versus. So it might just be looking at the state qualifications and adopting some of that language. It might be just clearer. So people would say like, oh, if I'm exploring it, talking to neighbors, even having people over the house to talk about things like that's okay. I'm I can do that and give them coffee and cookies. And then versus doing a fundraiser, which I need to be registered for to do that.
That sounds good to me. The other two questions I had. One was related to five, 10, oh, three, oh, B, which was about special elections. And I just, I wasn't totally clear. And I think Councilmember Kovar had a question on this also about why there was the language there that candidates have to register at the earliest opportunity, which is not something we require of people who are running for kind of general selection.
I have an answer for that. In in the charter, it describes what happens in a special, in if there's a vacancy on the council and if there's a special election. And what's described in the charter is a petition, a properly filed petition of a certain number of signatures needs to be submitted at least or no later than 20 days before the scheduled date of the election. So my thinking is that we would have that a form filed at the time of turning in a petition. Or it could be before, but no later than at the point where you're turning in a petition, you would sort of turn in your campaign finance form.
So would those candidates essentially be doing? I'm just trying to figure out if if they're trying to get those signatures for the petition. Are they essentially campaigning before they register then?
Yeah, see, the in a special election, the timeframe is so short for everything. Yeah, so we'll have the city attorney look at the the language, like the charter language and see if if how early we could require the the filing.
Okay.
And and I'm not sure on hands. We'll have him take a look at that.
Yeah, I was just thinking, and I don't, I don't know enough about how that process works to to know if this would work, but I was thinking maybe some language related to not at earliest opportunity, but something like before seeking office or something like that. So to sort of echo the other language we already have.
Or we can do something like what when you if I distribute the petition for us, when you pick up a petition, you file that form at that point would be an option, for instance. Just throwing that out there is something to think about. We have several council members here who came into office originally with special elections, so.
It's very quick.
Yeah, it's very quick.
And then I just have one final question, which was about the authority line exemption items. And I wondered if instead of listing the items, it would be better to just say items that are smaller than, you know, whatever size we choose, don't have to have an authority line. And I'm also curious about Mr. Ling's recommendation on on apparel, not having an authority line and and why that is, or or what the pros and cons of that might be.
Yeah, I I I think the board's thoughts just were that the shirts, it's just something that would make them less attractive aesthetically. And I think you tend not to see those kinds of authority lines on campaign apparel for state or federal. I I don't think I've ever seen an authorized for by on a T-shirt before. So that was just the idea about taking it off the or exempting apparel.
Yeah, I was just sort of in terms of the buttons. I'm not, I'm not sure if these, I'm not sure how important the authority line is or isn't. I could see a situation where an offensive button were made or, you know, a button that were was really criticizing a candidate or something like that. And if it didn't have some type of authority line, that could be easily mass produced and handed out. And I I'm just sort of thinking through what what the value of requiring that or not is. And that could still happen without an authority line and it could be against the code and people could still do it.
Under the previous iteration of the code, people, a a campaign or a committee or a group that was creating apparel or buttons that were exempt under the code from the authority line requirements were required to submit a notice or a filing, I think, with the city clerk. And so I I suppose the idea behind that was that if someone finds a button that's offensive, they can come to the city clerk and ask city clerk who who printed this? And that the city clerk would have that on file. That said, I don't think anyone filed anything last cycle. So.
All right, thank you.
I'll just piggyback on the authority line. I think I think it may be easier for candidates if it it we did just require it on things and it's actually, you know, on buttons and stickers, if you go to a printer, it's actually not, they can do it. And I think once we start exempting things more, it's more likely mistakes are going to be made because it's really hard to remember what is or isn't exempted. And so I think if we do go down that path, I I like Councilman Kostic, like if it's, you know, under a certain size, but I think you know, and at the state and federal level, everything that put a campaign puts out has to have an authority line. Including pens. So it does, the size doesn't matter. T-shirts. Yeah, so. Yeah. It's just good. So I think if we're like doing something, it's better to have it one way or the other or a size thing. Because I think if we start specifying not buttons or whatever, somebody's going to make a mistake, a honest mistake. Councilmember Kovar, did you have?
Sorry, my my area is getting darker and my yeah, it remains unstable. I'll just mention three things really quickly. And then if I'm able to hear the response, if not, it can be later. So so these are more general about the conduct of the election. So I'll just mention it. One of the things that happened during COVID was we could watch a screen of of the people counting, but there really wasn't a sense that we knew what was happening from moment to moment. So I just wanted to make a push for this fall, if there's a way to have that actually be more public. So that's one thing. The second thing, I don't know, maybe this is done anyway. I just don't recall, but at the end of end of the election process is while the votes that were cast so that the people understand and are less worried about the numbers later not matching. And that's just a question I have. And then the third thing is in the past, it hasn't always been easy as a candidate. And I said, even after I had first been a candidate, looking later, but especially for new candidates to find the one spot on the website, here's every single thing you need to do. I think is there a time, but it's not 100% there. And I really think what we ought to do is for especially for would be candidates, say, here's everything, you know, you you might need to get an EIN to establish a committee. You might, you need to do all these things. And here's all the dates just in one spot. I think a lot of it's there, but I don't think 100% of it is there. And I think that would be worth doing at least in advance of nominating caucus. So thank you for everybody and apologize again that I've been coming in and out a little bit tonight.
Great, thanks, Councilmember Kovar. And Matt, I did, I did think that the Board of Elections had talked about, I don't know if you all revisit, the idea of having a sort of a meeting with can, you know, candidates or potential candidates, just to kind of go through some of that stuff. Is that something the Board of Elections is still considering?
Yeah, those are definitely top priorities for the board, both to have a public facing part of the website, display all the information like an FAQ from start to finish, what they need to do. And perhaps have like a printout of that available at City Hall for pickup. But as well, we've discussed and planned to host some seminars, whether through Zoom or through or at City Hall with any candidates really so that we can walk through and then answer questions in person as well.
Oh, thank you. Any other comments or questions, Councilman DiBala?
Yeah, just one more point on registration. So based on what we've been saying tonight on five, 10, oh, three, five, A. It says within two business days of a political committee being formed, they must register. And the discussion we're having is that it it might be the first you register and then you do stuff rather than you do it and then you go and register quick afterwards. So just maybe that needs to be rewarded, just a thought.
I I think you're certainly correct. Sorry, but I think that is confusing, Councilmember Kovar.
Well, I I would also just like to close by saying thank you to the to you and the Board of Elections for doing this, because this is a very important piece of work that you've tackled here. I really appreciate your having put this out here for us to discuss. Thank you.
Councilman Kostic? Just one more quick thing, and I want to echo that. Thanks as well. For five, 12, oh, two, oh, D, this is the section we're adding about the contributions. Number four, I just want to double check with the the attorney. It says a foreign national, which includes, and that has several items. I assume that it is only a foreign national that meets one of those requirements, not a foreign national who doesn't. I just want to make sure that that's accurate because we do have noncitizen voting. And so as you could have a contribution from someone who is not a citizen. I think it's just a question of what that which includes, if the which includes means only the one of those things, or if it means any of those things and other things or not.
Yeah, it is worded confusing, the the federal laws. In fact, I, Matt and I were looking at that. So I want to get some clarification on that. This section, we did incorporate from Hyattsville, which, you know, went through a, they also have noncitizen voting. So so we'll take another look at that. But I I think it is the case that it is federal law. So we there's, we can't exempt ourselves from it. But we'll figure out exactly what it means. So, yeah.
But my understanding is that a noncitizen is not permitted to contribute. Is that right, Jesse?
I think that's right. But again, we'll double, we will reconfirm that.
Okay, thanks. It it does. It from the items listed, it looks like it means someone who is a noncitizen who doesn't reside in the U.S. or someone who is not documented in the U.S., but potentially someone who is. But potentially someone who is. Could, so I just want to make sure we clarify that, yeah.
Definitely be clear.
Yeah, because you can vote, but you can't donate.
Yeah.
Be weird.
Yeah. So definitely appreciate all your comments, and feel free to send anything else that you, if. That you didn't get to mention, because, um. Again, we're just, we're just trying to fix a few things before the election. So it's more clear, if we're making things more confusing. That that's not the goal.
Mm-hmm.
So, um.
Great, well, thank you, and uh, and Matt, really, thank you so much, um, for taking this on and and looking at this, um. I think all of us who have have run for office know, like, it's not until you actually start doing it. And start thinking about these things in practice, and there's always like, well, what if, what about this, and. To think of the those all, every scenario ahead of time, and it was really difficult, and we really appreciate you and the board, um, taking on this task. And I'm thinking about, thinking all those uh, scenarios through, so thank you so much.
Of course, thank you, the board appreciates the feedback. Um, trying to make this as uh, easy as it can possibly be for candidates, while also serving the values of transparency and fairness, so. We definitely appreciate the feedback, so thanks, Ken.
Great, thank you so much, alright, so, again, if you have additional comments or questions, please send those into the city clerk, so that we can vote on the first reading of this. Next week. And that is all our business this week, um, so. We are, we are done for this evening, um. But the next two weeks are gonna be pretty heavy, so. Go home and relax tonight, uh, and get ready for the next two weeks, thank you everyone, have a good evening.